Okay, good evening. We'll call this meeting to order. Eyes for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Sorry. Oh. Excuse me, sorry. Roll call.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Jody Thompson, board member.
Bernadette Power, board member.
Ryan Christelli, board member.
Chris Lesman, superintendent.
Senator Mary Staff.
Jeff Monroe Staff.
Julie Bar Staff.
Please Arnold Staff.
Smith Staff.
And the Stolzmann Staff.
Delaney Hansen, student representative.
Good evening, Delaney.
Hi, it's good to see you guys.
Likewise. Okay. Approval of board minutes for August 20. Sorry, yes, I forgot. I'll make a motion to excuse Jamie Bailey from the board meeting.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of the board meeting minutes from August 24, 2022.
I'm here for the approval of board meeting minutes for August 24, 2022.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, I guess just a formal thank you from the board for those people who may be leaving us, but also an exciting welcome to our new staff that will be joining us.
We have a lot. We have grown exponentially.
There's a lovely list. They're so welcome to our new staff. Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any additional discussion or additions? Additional additions, as superintendent? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, long-range facilities, thought exchange committee.
Eric, did you want to pull my presentation up for me, or do I'm going to share my screen?
You can share your screen.
Let me share my screen. Um, we've adopted a new software for our long-range facilities committee. That's actually going to be a piece of software we're going to be using for a lot of our, a lot of our district correspondence with community. It's called a thought exchange. It is an open-ended conversation where people can, we ask an open-ended question, community members, parents, families can respond to the question, and then you go in and you can rank those responses. And really what it does is it gives the district kind of a better understanding on where our community is at. Jeff Monroe has taken our long-range facilities committee, kind of looking at student growth. I mean, we'll talk about it probably at our next board, at our next board meeting really, really well, but we're up about 120 students overall district enrollment, but there's 40 that were online that moved back into in buildings. We actually have about 160 additional bodies walking our hallways right now. And we are about ready to burst at the seams. So Jeff has just done an incredible job this summer, really leading our community, talking about our growth, really what we need. And what it really, what it really came down to is our long-range facility says, hey, we really can't make a decision until we know where our community is at. And we took this in process, this open-ended question. So we currently have 144 thoughts. That means individual ideas on what our district needs to prioritize for our long-range facilities, 218 participants, 15, well, we're up to 1,650 students in our district. You know, I'd like to see, uh, probably more than about, you know, 144. So I think we're about 10% of our families have responded. You know? But we've had a lot of active engagement, about 33 staff members and 171 parents actively engaged through like the voting process. And kind of begin as a word bubble on what our parents thought. And the biggest things that are sticking out is we're growing, we're running out of room, and we have a larger population, and we'd like to have smaller class sizes and classrooms and opportunities. So our families are really, really clear that we need to do, I mean, our families are saying that we are full. And, uh, and at the elementary school, we are most definitely full. We looked at some of the most key thoughts. It's class size is a top priority, and this is the number one voted on response. If we overcrowd class, if we overcrowd classes, kids do not learn as well or have as many opportunities. We need to work on an academic improvement, giving students the ability to go into the trades. So a lot of emphasis on how are we kind of preparing our students for technical trades in the classroom? And then updating for our growing population and kind of a more modern learning environment. When we looked at the biggest kind of trend, it was kind of more miscellaneously, um, you know, a lot of kind of various concerns. But again, the second, third, fourth is going to be getting into learning spaces, classroom space, and then into our fields. And then when we kind of get into things by star vote, this means what people voted on, it was that we needed to really address the growing population in Elma and our safe and security, as well as kind of clean air. There's a big concern on our, our air quality, which Jeff had spoken to a lot as we were working our way through COVID on our classroom-based units. When we looked at our basic thoughts, we broke down that we just need to update more spots for our growing population. We need to make sure we have room, and then that our community is growing, and we haven't updated classrooms since the eighties. I think there was an update to the inside of the elementary in the mid-nineties. But just in general, on how are we updating our learning environment? We talked about safety and inclusion. We talked a lot about that. There's a place, schools know space for weapons and bullying. Students need to have a place where they feel safe, so they have their state on, you know, their state on learning. And then safety of children inside the buildings in case of an active shooter. For the airs, as the elementary school building is bulging at the seams, building has not air conditioning would be helpful. So there's a big concern for air conditioning. I think this is also indicative of running the survey when it was 80 to 90 degrees outside. Do not have air conditioning. And I think, uh, and again, we also don't have central ventilation. So a lot of times it's can you plug an air conditioner into your central heating system? We don't have a central heating system outside of the common and gym. So we can make the gyms and the commons a nice cool spot. But classrooms, that would be a multimillion-dollar project, so we don't have any duct, or to actually connect those. So I think we would like air conditioning. I don't even have, I'm moving over from Eastern Washington. I don't have air conditioning in my house, and I can empathize. Because it's not fun. Class size is a top priority, smaller class size and more educational programs. And then also more area to kind of accommodate more and more students moving in. And then again, classroom space. And then our facilities, our top thought in our building, my facilities, it's the Elma facilities won't get cheaper. Elma facilities need work, stadium flooding concerns, need to move to a drier location. Elementary, middle school are beyond capacity, and the high school tech spaces is the most voted on for the facilities. Having quality learning extracurricular facilities for a broad range of student interest and abilities that foster pride. And we need sports facilities with covered seating bathrooms and concessions. So just kind of more on really like our outdoor learning spaces. And then the last one would be what to do about our football stadium. Sports complex, football field, it'd be nice for the kids to experience games where they were 15, the way they were 15 years ago with concession stands and realistic space. Previous levees have failed, and our old stadium wasn't fancy, so new one doesn't need to be. And last, it should be a top priority. And then again, more on our learning spaces and equipment. So, community together, and I probably could go on for a while. We looked at areas where what I like about the thought exchange is it gives you an area where you kind of look at the differences. So you notice like a new football field and track. There is 10 people who voted that only one star or an average of about 1.2 versus 21 people voted about anywhere between a four and a five. So what we noticed is that same 10 people voted low on both a new football field and track and building a grandstand stadium at Davis Field. But all of those few people said that class size is a top priority, and elementary has outgrown its building, and there's not enough class spaces. So what I like about the differences is it kind of lets you know, like, these 10 people voted, you know, these 10 people voted low on this, these 21 people voted high, but all 20, all 31 people voted high on classroom spaces. So all 31 of those people feel that the classroom spacing is a big issue. So you kind of see like a two-to-one ratio. And when we break it down to a stadium, 55% of the population say we should, right? Give our communities more pride. But then all 70, what is it, 72 people said that we need to have a safety for our students in case of an active shooter, and all 72 said space to provide children with a higher quality education, teach important skills or paramount. So we noticed that trend where, even though our community is kind of divided on what are we going to do with our athletic facilities, we have a lot of people really, really strongly united on safety and space, and that we're kind of growing beyond capacity. And then again, 28%, 20, 23% of the people, 23 out of eight were learning spaces and additional elective space, that had a low. You know, it's just too much emphasis on athletics as a 1.1, and, uh, sports should not, education should be the top priority. And then classroom space is a top priority in elementary schools outgrown its building. Again, we still have cohesion on the elementary is beyond capacity, and that's really where we're finding people are not divided. So, and this differences section is really kind of what I liked the most about the thought exchange, where you can see these lines in which your community is divided on. I mean, again, we're sitting about 10%, you know, respondents for overall population of our district. Obviously, it's not students doing this. I'd like to see if we get a few more respondents before we kind of go out and say, this is what our community is saying, but in general, I think 10% is a pretty good representation of our community. So that's where we are. That's going to go to our long-range facilities committee. Our long-range facilities committee is going to review that, those responses, and come back to the board in early October board meeting. With the culmination of the long-range facilities recommendation for the board.
So there's still opportunities for people to take that survey?
Yeah, it's still open.
And remind me how they're accessing it?
We send an email out to all parents in the district, asking them to respond. It's been posted on our social media. We can share it again. Jody, I think you shared it across yours. That was really appreciated. And Jeff sent out to all the members of the long-range facilities to start pumping it out to everybody in the community. And again, we chose this survey because it's not binary, right? It gives us a chance now to see what issues our community is divided on. And I feel like we have a really, really good picture on what our community is divided on and at what rate they're divided. So the more people who fill it out, the more we can see on what lines our population is divided. And then this was polled yesterday at the end of the day, so if anybody filled it out. One thing I really like about it is it actually generates a paragraph. I'll go pull it up. It actually generates a paragraph based upon like the most top, top-rated votes. And that will actually give you like a statement. It's an AI-generated statement on what your community wants. So it's, uh, the grammar is not perfect because it's generated by the computer. But I'll go ahead and show you the AI-generated statement, because I think it's pretty cool. So the elementary school has outgrown its building, not enough classrooms, more classrooms to accommodate larger capacity. Class sizes are too large to impact the student learning opportunity, need to get help. High school needs tech spaces, safety of children staff inside the buildings in case of active shooter or the dangerous situation. Football stands, football stadium builds a sense of pride in the community and the school. The elementary school is in need of bigger spaces. Sports help keep kids active in school and brings the community together. Teaching kids in alignment with our constitutional rights and processes, help them understand what a totalitarian government looks like. So.
It reads, we're like a Mad Libs, I'm sorry.
I do like the heat maps is one other section that I do enjoy.
I like heat maps.
Because it does let us know like how we're divided and what people were most, most responses are. Then the thing I really liked about it is we can also look at how and where they did their survey. So if I'm looking at everybody, I can look at also where they did the survey. And then you can actually break it apart. And one thing that we found was is like, we were actually able to break it down by staff, and we actually saw that more staff members did it on social media, more community members did it on email, which would also be parents. So we noticed a lot of our staff, you know. So we, so we noticed like a lot of trend, like language. So we talked about like learning spaces or class size. Right, online, class size versus that's something that you'll hear a lot of teachers talk about, class size is a big issue. Versus you'll see like growing, we're growing was by email. So learning and class sizes were the same, but you'll notice that even though they're the same terminal, they mean the same thing. And notice that parents, by and large, refer to, we need to respond to how quickly we're growing versus teacher respond, teachers' responses are more like we need to respond to our class sizes. Both topics kind of get to the same need of things, but when we broke it down on is it a community member, or we started getting kind of those trends. So I like the heat map kind of lets you know who is saying what, where. So.
And we've been getting to, you know, places such as the Eagles or Chamber of Commerce in order to, you know, even setting up in front of the post office might be a good idea too, because for this, sounds like we're reaching parents and we're reaching staff, but there's a lot of voting people that don't fall into those categories that we need to know where they stand on in our community.
We're really short on our community engagement. We were hoping a social media push with Bridget. We didn't bridge it. We began this week on reaching out to our community members to do a community member sharing. On can you ask five other community members to share this and try to do a bridging? That's going to be the next push is, is going out to these specific areas, sharing the link with them and having them do the survey. Because you're right, it's those community members such as Eagles group that we, you know, chamber population that we haven't reached, that we're not getting all that last of the feedback we need. So, uh, because again, it's, we can show on the heat map the general by and large responses are parents and teachers. And our heat map is not showing a by and large response of community members now who no longer have children in the district.
My channel page has literally just had, or thousands of hits in a four-week period. I mean, there's no reason why they can't put the link up there.
That'd be fantastic. We can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, it is. I mean, we're going to need everybody to help.
And right now, they'll be.
Their opinion on what our, what our school district is needed in this community.
And that page will, will reach a lot of people because there's a lot of activities coming up.
It is the more we can learn what our community wants. Like I said, we know class size space, the fact that we're growing, our population is growing, and we need to address our safety concerns. I think those are two key topics that we need to address, but I'd really like to know what our non-parent, non-teacher community members are thinking. Because that is still a very highly active voting population. So that is where we are on the thought exchange feedback. We can do this survey for anything. We have this subscription for a year. So I know that I think, I mean, our big plan is to start running this or approach with the graduate work, really refining our approach with the graduate on what our community would like to have of our students. And we're looking at a whole bunch of more avenues in which we can start collecting this type of information because I think it's just more authentic as opposed to a multiple-choice survey that says, you know.
I like the way it looks. It's broken down.
The paragraph's a little weird.
The paragraph is really weird. Really weird. Okay, thank you for all the information. So we'll go to communications and comments. Do we have anyone here for ETO? EESP? Icopa? Admin? Anyone send an email to be heard, Candace?
No.
Okay. Hey, then we will move on to new business. We have the approval to accept the fuel bid for the 22, 23 school year.
I'll move for the approval to accept the fuel, yeah, fuel bid for 2023.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of the out-of-area teaching assignment.
We just, um, we just need to do an approval for Ms. Better to be teaching a section of, a section of middle school PE for sixth grade.
Uh, yeah, it's in my tech class.
Yes.
She appears to be the jack of all trades.
She appears to be.
Yeah. I make a motion and we approve the key veteran, middle school PE, out-of-area teaching.
I'll second it. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of the Elma Performing Arts Booster fundraiser.
Katie is here, if you have questions.
I'd like to know what, what it is.
Oh, I just saw that was a flyer that was sent in.
Yes, I could.
Right here?
And we're sold out.
Oh, yeah, it's a legend.
You can, you can show, you can. You can show us your lovely flyer.
I scroll far enough down now.
He's seen enough, he stopped scrolling.
I appreciate you bringing low-tech options.
This is English.
You got trans.
So what we're trying to accomplish is we want to give the kids an opportunity to use field trips. We don't expect to go through all five field trips that the teacher outline in his syllabus as an optional option. But we want to at least give them hope that we can give them something, because it's been a couple of tough years for performing arts. So this was our idea.
So there's, I mean, in theory, like, I'm just curious, their individual families would buy the sign for them, right?
Yeah. And the idea is to get a concert or whatever event, the Costa Co's having, you have a little table to the side at the end. They can order for.
I mean, I think if you call the C.
Yeah.
Just to see the.
Yeah.
I more just hate it that they basically have to sell their own thing to raise money for their field trip. So it feels counterintuitive in the way of a fundraiser, but I love seeing it in the way of having it out there. Yeah. Maybe there'll be some generous people who will want to donate signs on behalf of some kids or something.
We're trying to promote the play that they do every year, because that wasn't really promoted in last year. So we're trying to get it out there, letting community members see the kids do their thing.
And just as a side note, you know, the Elma School District is a chamber member. So anytime you reach out to the chamber office, they will put things on Facebook.
Oh, perfect.
And we boost all the time at the chamber, so they'll reach a lot of people. And it again goes to what Ryan was saying, those are not always people in the district with kids, but who would enjoy watching performing arts. So I think that that's another really good avenue to use, to utilize.
And I was going to save it for my, my, my report, but one of the approvals tonight was the new administrative assistant. That's what she'll be doing, is promoting all of our events. Because our plan is to try to have about two to three things that are going on a day going out. She doesn't begin until the 26th. So the, um, the Walker will begin on September 26th. And then that's where we want to start getting all of this information, so we can just start reading that. Yes. So it's, it's, it's our hope to make sure that we have.
We can work together on this.
Yes.
I make a motion for the approval of the Elma Performing Arts Booster fundraiser.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Okay, approval of temporarily, well, to temporarily move, oh, I forgot, make this bigger, sorry. Move the board meetings from Wednesdays to Tuesdays through the end of October.
This is, I'll be blunt, this is really, really my request to move the board meetings, just because like you don't want to spend the night. I'm trying to finalize my doctorate degree, and I have a class from WSU scheduled right over, actually going on right now. And I just have to, I'm just requesting that we have a, the board meetings for the next three board meetings would be on Tuesday nights, as I'm trying to submit a proposal for my dissertations, so.
Could we also use that as kind of a pilot? I know there was some, there was some discussion just as far as the board that we would like to entertain, maybe an alternate night besides the Tuesday, or sorry, besides the Wednesday. So maybe we could, um, trying to get some feedback from.
I think that's a good idea.
The district admin team and the people who typically need to attend.
Yeah.
Of how a Tuesday would impact them versus a Wednesday.
I think this is a great opportunity. I know when I feel like I spoke to some board members about presenting this, and the response was, oh goodness, can we leave it there? So I really do appreciate you being so accommodating, and then I think that was the least we can do is try to get feedback on how this is working for a Tuesday night board meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
I'll move for the approval to temporarily move board meetings from Wednesday to Tuesdays through October 31st, 2022.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, superintendent report.
A big one is, and Jeff is here, we just bought, you say, 140 posts.
Recapitated six posts.
Sixty.
250 feet of temporary fence.
Okay, so we are going to be installing a temporary fence, an email went out to parents that we're installing a temporary fence. We're going to be reevaluating our district-wide safety plan for our remaining fall events. We did have a student-wide event, but we can't, you know, understood privacy. We can't release details of everything that went on, you know. And I think a lot of our family would appreciate that if it was your child, you'd appreciate discretion regarding your own child. But we, I will say that we are drawing a hard line on students being in those dark areas. We did move some light posts around to increase the lighting back there, so that they can move around. It's kind of lighting up that back area a little bit more, and then we're looking for more administrative presence to again cover that back fence area. So that email went out yesterday, the email went out. I'll be really blunt, the, the timing on that email was really strategic. I e, I call it Jeff, and Jeff confirmed that we could get defense posts before I sent the email out saying that we're building a fence. Because I didn't want to send the email saying we're building a fence to find out, we couldn't get the materials to build the fence. So that email came out the moment we knew that that fence could be built. And that's why we put our messaging out. Beyond that, I mean, there's been a lot that's happened since our last board meeting. We had an absolutely, just, just probably one of the, I don't know, I think, just really great summer institute. I think we had lots of just really strong feedback on our summer institute. We had my friend Karan Omani, he wrote the book, The Brain-Based Classroom, came out, and he did work with neural ed, brought his team from the neural education team. So I think our teachers just felt really empowered to have, you know, if you have somebody who authored a book coming in and they're working with you specifically, and I think every teacher got a copy of the book. We move forward with our mastery-based learning work, where teachers are mapping out all of the academic standards. We're making great progress. I think we had an update meeting team with our, uh, our consulting firm today. And then we're mapping out our processes there, and we're kind of laying out our schedules on how we're moving forward. And we had a lot of great work on our UDL team on working with our teachers for more full inclusion. We want to, we want to have less pull-out time for our students receiving special services. We want our students to deal with the general population as much as possible throughout the day, and we're really working with our teachers. So I think just summer institute was just really just powerful experience on setting the vision and direction of our district. We are moving forward at our next board meeting. We'll be mapping out all future board meetings on what our discussion topics are going to be in our future board meeting, top, top, agenda topics. I think our principal team is actually working with our consulting firm today, or class meeting, on mapping out support to for our board on reviewing our board policies. We're going to be doing the 2000 series on how our, how our board policies align to our district strategic goals. It's our mastery-based learning. So I feel that our next, by our next board meeting, we're going to be able to have a schedule of all of the board meetings for the remainder of the year and what all the topics will be, and how we will be moving forward on the, on all the board goals. So we'll be bringing that for board approval on, at our next meeting. Then Lisa's just been making incredible progress on our process management tools. So I think we're planning on having some timelines for our process management. So we've been doing a lot of work on making sure we have deadlines for each year board goals, so that way we know we can get the board goals accomplished. So we feel that by our next board meeting, we can have a board meeting agenda on when we know we can talk about each topic, because we can have a deadline when everything can be done. That includes our long-range facilities, who is really, really close to that. So, um, and then I think the only other big thing, I think it's official now that we can talk about it, is Ray Smith is the Skills USA National President, finally advertised by Skills USA. So congratulations to the Smith family, but the.
Tricked it to DC? Well, no, I triggered an airplane.
Took her to DC? Well, no, I took her to the airport. Fast trip. I just ran by.
Did you, did you, Eric, could you give her the sights to see?
She is actually going to be doing, she said.
Each officer took one of the national monuments and it was their responsibility to. Research it and write the script for it. And so they are being, um, videoed at, on their respective sites and then giving the, the tour. And then that will be done via video to all of the, the six hundred students that are coming in across the nation. So.
That's fantastic.
So they, she has one that she gets to be the expert one.
Do you remember? That's actually, that's actually probably one of the best monuments to go see. It was a good one.
Yeah, she was pretty excited about it.
So we have in the last few weeks, we have a lot going on. And then the very last one, we approved it. A D Walker will be beginning on the twenty-sixth, which I'm really, um. Excited about because our office is barely keeping our head above water. So our plan is to now get. Um, getting all of the board reports back into place where we're mapping out everything that has been done. And we're able to get our, our line of communication, get our website back up to date, get our social media that is back now back to running on full force and all of the events that are going on. You might have noticed that our social media has been really light. That is because we have been down staff members in our office. And then the absolute, I guess I should say, the last is a good year is we've given an agenda. On September twenty-first, uh, Superintendent Reichdahl will be spending all day in Elma. Um, and the state superintendent will be touring our registered apprenticeship initiative. Where students will be graduating high school with a journey level certification and will be taken a tour over at Bond Company. Um, where we have a youth apprentices placed. Uh, we'll be talking with LNI and AJAC, our JATC, our Joint Apprenticeship Training Committee. It's our apprenticeship partner. Who's mapping out those on-the-job experiences tied to the LNI Registered Apprenticeship, which is what enables those students to earn a journey-level certification while they're in high school. And Elma is receiving a lot of statewide recognition for our registered apprenticeship that has been running all summer, five students placed this summer. So that was probably one of my longest superintendent reports, but. We've had a lot of really, really good things going on and we're just really short on manpower. I'm putting all the information out. I think Candace is the most excited.
Pretty excited.
So that is it. Is there any questions?
Been busy.
We, we've been really, really, you know, obviously I can't really take a lot of credit. I mean, Julie and Mark and Sunshine have just been doing. Just working with our mastery-based learning team, working with teams of teachers. Greg Scroggins has TK. We're ready to go beginning of October first. That is better screening students beginning next week. Um, honestly, um, our administrative team, we set some goals, they built their teams and they've let them really through. And I do think that. I mean, to have the state superintendent come tour Elma and the fact that Elma is really, um, standing out as this model. I think our, our administrators and our teachers and our, or just our team really earned that recognition.
Thank you so much. Okay. Student representative report from Delaney Hampton.
She left the meeting and she hasn't, a while ago, and she's not in the attendees. Let's see the.
Okay, well. I, I can't report on that. Um, I think that that's, that's. Oh, do you want me to?
Yeah.
Oh, there's been a motion made with seconded. All in favor?